Five, four, three. Well, good evening, everyone. What a beautiful December night with construction going on out behind us and and all of us gathered here. We have a a pretty busy agenda tonight, and we have a open agenda, a budget agenda, and then a closed agenda probably following the budget agenda. So let's get started and see how far we can make it tonight. The second, this is the second meeting of the one hundred and forty-third Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas, and is there any disclosures of interest from members? Seeing none? Minutes?
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meetings held on November fourteenth, fifteenth, and twenty-first two thousand and twenty-two be confirmed. Moved by Counsel Peter, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Counsel will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to an application for an amendment to the zoning bylaw to remove a holding zone symbol at ten twenty-nine Talbot Street. I have a motion that report PD fifty-five twenty-two relating to an amendment to the city zoning bylaw to remove the H-one holding zone symbol from the lands located at top twelve, uh, ten twenty-nine Talbot Street. Be received for information, and further that the removal of the H-one holding symbol be approved and staff authorized to prepare an amending bylaw, and further that notice of council's intention to pass an amending bylaw to remove a holding symbol from zoning bylaw fifty-eight-eight as amended be given pursuant to Ontario Regulation five forty-five slash oh-six. Moved by Counsel Herbert, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Next?
No further items under this committee unless there are any items from the members. Our your worship seeing none, we'll move to community engagement and services. Nothing on the agenda at this time unless there are any items from the members.
Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you very much. I would like to call upon the director, Mr. Bray, to ask about the updates to the childcare center, which will be providing eighty-eight childcare spaces in the very near future, and the park across the street, which seem to be moving along at a very rapid pace.
Mister Bray?
Through you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for your inquiry. Finally, things are moving along. Uh, the childcare center, uh, it should be enclosed for winter. The roof is all, will be finished this week, hopefully. And we're hoping things have been delayed with the HVAC system, but we're looking at occupancy in June there. Uh, the park is, uh, they're, they're doing, they should be finished. All the, uh, they've got the base level of asphalt down. All the concrete will be in by tomorrow, and then we'll finish it up in the spring.
Good, carry on.
Thank you. You discussed occupancy in June. Does that mean childcare spaces will be available in June, or are we looking for September to have full occupancy with the childcare?
If you don't mind, I will defer to my colleague Heather Sheridan.
Thank you for the question. The childcare spaces will be full by September. So June will be the opening, like, people will be able to start using it, but we won't have children in there fully until September.
Thank you. Counsel Baldwin Sands, then Counsel Peters, then Counselor Herbert.
Before you go, could you please tell again the public how many spaces that we are looking at for September?
Yep, there'll be eighty-eight new spaces in St. Thomas.
Great. Counsel Peters.
Thanks very much, worship, uh, to Jeff. Back to the childcare center. It's been an interesting process watching the Element Five Lego be put together. Um, and I hope that we had some time lapse photography. But today, there was a steel beam installed, and there's another one ready to go in. And I had the opportunity to review the site plan this afternoon and how this one got by us, but that steel beam is right to the curb. And it looks like it's gonna be, uh, a covering. And I doubt if this wasn't a city building, we'd, we'd even have approved this. I just asked that somebody look at it. It, as I say, it comes right to the curb. I can just see somebody, a truck or something like that, fully loaded, hanging out a little bit and taking out the front of this, but have a look at it. I don't know if it's a design issue or that we should be concerned about, but it's, it's something. The steel beam just went in today, and, uh, I had a chance to say to look at the site plan, and we did approve it, but I think if a private contractor was doing it, I don't think we would have. But anyway, if you'd look at that, please.
Uh, through Mayor Preston, thank you very much for raising that. That's the Canada Leeward opening, but I will review to see how far it should come beyond the, the building facade.
It's right to the curb.
Thank you.
Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. This is for Heather, sorry. Make you sit down. Can you just inform the public, how do you apply for one of those spaces over the childcare?
So the, thank you for the questions. The application for those childcare spaces hasn't opened yet, but it will be opening in the next little bit. It'll be through our regular childcare application process, which is through OCCMS, and we can, that's the childcare management center. It's a sorry, it is a, oh, internet, uh, application form, but it can, anybody who calls the, our office at, uh, Social Services will get information about applying for those spaces.
Thank you. Just one last question, worship. Go ahead. Is it first come, or do you guys decide who gets what?
There is a waiting list, for sure.
Okay, you. Anything else under community engagement services? Seeing none?
We'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. The first item relates to a repeal of bylaw nine seventy-five and, uh, an amendment to bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine. I have a motion that report ES seventy-five twenty-two relating to the repeal of bylaw nine seventy-five and an amendment to bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine be received for information. And further, the council repeal bylaw number nine seventy-five being a bylaw for the regulation of streets and the preservation of order therein to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine. And further, that council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine as described in report ES seventy-five twenty-two. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
Thanks, your worship. Almost sad to see this bylaw go. Uh, it's nice to see that what's on the books from eighteen ninety still. But I, I just wanna have the comfort level and, and that, I, I don't know whether our technical people could post this on the city website, because it, it's, it's hilarious to, to read what, what we used to regulate, but I, I just wanna so, you know, clause eleven, it says, no person shall play any game of nine or ten pins, ball or cricket or other games on any street or alley within the city. Does that mean all the years that I was playing ball hockey, it was technically illegal? I just throw that one out there. Yes. No person shall sprinkle, spread, or place any salt or other like surface on road or carriageway in any public street or highway. So I'm curious, does that mean all these years we've been sanding and salting streets that we've been contributing our own bylaw? Uh, this one, I wanna make sure is covered up. No, no person shall expose or display any goods, wares, or merchandise on any public sidewalk, street, or place, and I just wanna make sure that you know, we don't wanna see if this bylaw is repealed, that someone says, okay, there's no bylaw in place, and I can put whatever I want out in front of my business. That was clause fifteen B. The other one is no person shall use an axe, an iron steel, or metal spade, hoe, or shovel, or any iron steel metal implement removing snow or ice from any granolithic or artificial stone sidewalk. So does that mean my snow shovel's been illegal all these years? No person shall break, train, horses, run, assist, or take part in horse races, play at any game of shinny, ball, or cricket, or lacrosse, or any game or sport or otherwise, use any bow and arrow, catapult, pitch and toss, throw any hammer, bar, shot, bullet, stone, snowball, or other missile in any public streets or sidewalks in the city. So you know, I wanna make sure that that one gets covered off, because we don't want any, uh, catapults and pitch and toss, whatever that may be.
Doesn't sound good for the pigeon.
No person shall drive a herd or drove of cattle, sheep, pigs through the streets, um, et cetera. So if this is repealed, does this, and I, I, you, I may be casting some joke on this, but I wanna make sure that when we replace a bylaw that we are covered off, that someone can't just for the fun of it go and say, I'm gonna bring my pigs down Talbot Street. So um, I always love this one. No person shall ride a bicycle or tricycle or ride, draw, push, propel, carriage wagon, handcart, sled, sleigh, skateboard, or any vehicle on a sidewalk. That's, so I always thought that means wheelchairs must have been wrong too. The, uh, I love this. No person shall perform or practice rope walking or other gymnastic or athletic feats or assist the same in any public street. No person in any public street or place, um, shall travel and employ any vessel or vehicle to go to a tavern or boarding house. Does that mean I can't take a cab to go to a bar? I say some of these things tongue in cheek, your worship, but I, um, uh, this is one of the best ones. No person shall place, operate, run in any public street, any road engine, steam traction engine, or steam motor without leave. I think this was put in place because the first car didn't hit the streets of St. Thomas until eighteen ninety-eight. So this is an eighteen ninety bylaw. I just would want to ensure that we have the comfort level that even though some of the, the games may have changed, or some of the practices may have changed, that when we, if we, when we repeal this bylaw, and I have uh, some difficulty in doing that, just from a heritage standpoint, but is everything gonna be covered off? Have we gone through this with a fine tooth comb? Thanks, your worship.
Mister Lawrence, I'd like you to reassure Counselor Peters that you have in fact done that, but that also the outstanding fines he has for playing ball hockey and, and horseshoes on, uh, shoveling his sidewalk are still due to the city and will be expecting full payment.
Yeah, certainly. We'll send someone by tomorrow with the charges, but, uh, yeah, the, we went through the bylaw, um, and all the relevant bylaws in pretty good detail, and either determined that the clause was covered or, uh, in one way, in one of the bylaws, or we needed to make it one of the eight, uh, things that we see here that are added in to the bylaw, or it was, you know, um, seemingly irrelevant. Um, I don't know if we have the one on, on the herd, for example. I don't know if we covered it, but, uh, I just, I can't see it happening. I guess in theory, uh, someone could, although it would be against, uh, we have some rules against animals in the city, so it would probably be covered in that one. But yeah, no, I, we did go through and, and we looked for that reason. Um, and I wanted you to see this bylaw in the council agenda too, in its whole, because it's so interesting as a historical piece, because it's so, it changed, things change so much over time. Um, and we actually did this one on the initiative of Counsel Clark, who had suggested that we go through all the bylaws periodically, and just to, you know, to take a look at them and update them and stuff, and this one clearly had gotten out of date.
Further questions? Seeing none, then all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates to parking control on Bonnie Place. I have a motion that report ES seventy-six twenty-two relating to parking to, uh, control on Bonnie Place be received for information. And further, the council direct that a bylaw be prepared for its consideration to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine. Moved by Counsel McCully, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments on the bylaw? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried. Thank you.
Next item relates to private property waste collection at seventy-seven Princess Ave. I have motion that report ES seventy-seven twenty-two, uh, relating to private property waste collection at seventy-seven Princess Ave. Follow-up be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next item relates.
Sit down, please. There is no public comment from the gallery. You send us a letter of addressing to all of council, and we will decide whether a deputation is warranted. That's how it works. Nope. It's not how we, how it does. And please, don't stand at the railing. You're welcome to sit and watch council. No, that's not how I want it to be done. It's the rules of the place. Yes? Yes? Well, as I suggested, there's ways to bring articles towards council, and that's how we, how it works. Well, I'm well, uh, and a, as far as council goes, there's a meeting every Monday night. So that's when we, when we meet.
Excuse me, your worship, would you, uh, prefer to adjourn the meeting until such time as we, uh, request assistance from the police services?
That's, that's our next choice, is to adjourn so that we can carry on with our meeting. Would you, I mean, you're welcome to stay and, and all right, you're welcome to sit and watch our council. But, but we will move forward with our agenda. Okay. Thank you. Excuse me. I've given enough fair warning, please, okay? Thank you. All right, next item.
Uh, your worship, the next item on the agenda is the twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three New Year's Eve, uh, free transit service and overnight on-street parking. I have a motion that report ES seventy-eight, uh, twenty-two relating to the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three New Year's Eve free transit service and overnight on-street parking. Be received for information. And further, the council approved free transit service on New Year's Eve from nine forty-five PM on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, to three fifteen AM on January the first, two thousand twenty-three. And further, the council approved the suspension of enforcement for overnight parking restrictions on January the first, two thousand twenty-three, between the hours of two AM and six AM. Moved by Counsel McCully, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments on the transit? Mister Lawrence, can I just ask you, is this similar or the same as what we did in past years?
Uh, it is similar. I believe we have, um, two vehicles on, uh, this year. I can't remember how many we put in, um, the last few years, but we have two on, on demand, basically.
Super. Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to, uh, the Kane Street Scott Street corridor update. I have a motion that report ES eighty twenty-two relating to the Kane Street Scott Street corridor update be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee. Seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counsel Wookiee.
Thank you, worship. This is one of those topics that's, uh, been on my mind for a while, and, um, because it is so easy to speed down Scott Street. I see one of the recommendations is perhaps to make it into a two-way street. And I was just hoping for some commentary whether that would allow for parking still on Scott Street. My, I suspect the answer's no. Um, but I'd like, if we could, to get some commentary on that.
Mister Lawrence?
If, if not today, soon.
You can help, if you can't help us today, let us know you'll come back, but.
I can't answer it.
All right.
We could either, uh, have two-way traffic now, or if we rebuilt the road, we could add parking back if we, so if we coordinated this somehow with the next reconstruction, we could add it back. Uh, same for, um, uh, both streets, actually, both the, the two ways, one way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Counsel Peters?
Um, thanks, your worship, and I appreciate staff, and I'll rate, it'll probably get raised again, because that one day, the average speed of being fifty-two point seven kilometers an hour, that means somebody was speeding, and I've seen, still continue to see traffic going down at a higher rate of speed. I'm comfortable, though, keeping it in the phased uh, manner in which we're doing this, because I think if we're going to be going down the road of looking at Scott Street and changing a one-way on Scott Street, then why wouldn't we be, be taking the same consideration for Curtis Street? Um, as, as well too, but let's leave that aside for a separate day, and let's hopefully we can proceed with, uh, the roundabout and the, the first issues. Thank you.
Excellent. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No further items under this committee, your worship, unless there are any items from the members.
Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I have a question for Mister Lawrence, if I could, please. This is in regards to a project moving forward for sidewalks on Sunset Drive. We had a little quick discussion about it today, about, uh, the, um, how the students are getting to school, and when is the work going to be done, et cetera. Could you provide an update, please?
Mister Lawrence?
Uh, thanks. So, um, I understood your question today to be, uh, when is it, when is the Sunset Drive sidewalk being completed? Um, and where will it kind of terminate? What will it connect to? Uh, so, uh, it will go basically from Love Days on the east side of the road. It'll come down to Parkside School Entrance, which is the, the new traffic signal location. Um, at that point, it cross, you know, students in theory cross the road, and they'll go on the west side from the new traffic signal down to Glenwood. So in theory, a student, uh, from anywhere in Shaw Valley could get out to Sunset, use a sidewalk, and cross safely from the west side to the east side. Uh, in terms of the timing, uh, we'd hope to build that in the spring as early as possible uh, before the Parkside Drive project starts, and in terms of the cost, uh, it's actually apportioned to the developer as much as we can based on the traffic, pedestrian traffic that they will contribute, and I think that's probably about seventy-five percent will be a, a portion directly to the developer, not through development charges, but straight to the developer.
Go ahead.
I would just like to thank you very much for that update. It was one of the things when canvassing in the Shaw Valley area about those sidewalks, and I thank you for bringing that matter to the attention of everyone.
Further questions or comments on this, uh, section? Seeing none? Next?
Your worship, if there's no further items under this committee, we'll now move to corporate governance and administration. Uh, first item relates to the two thousand twenty-three emergency alternatives, uh, for council. I have a motion that report CC eighteen twenty-two relating to the two thousand twenty-three emergency alternatives be received for information. And further, that council establish the following roster of council members to serve as an alternate to the mayor for the year two thousand twenty-three in the event of a municipal emergency, should the mayor not be available. And that list begins with, uh, Counsel Clark alphabetically in January and ends with Counsel Kohler in December. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to the two thousand twenty-three general insurance and risk management services. I have a motion that reports TR twenty-two twenty-two relating to the general insurance and risk management services be received for information. And further, the council accept the proposal submitted by Marsh, Marsh Canada Limited in the amount of seven hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars plus applicable taxes. Moved by Counsel Wookiee. Seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates the Ontario Municipal Employees Retirement System, Omer's Pension Plan. I have a motion that report HR ten twenty-two regarding the Ontario Municipal Employees Retirement System Pension Plan be received for information. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Well, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Your worship, if there's no further items under this committee from the members. I now have a motion that the recommendations, directions, and actions of council and committee of the whole, as recorded in the minutes of this date, be confirmed, ratified, and adopted. Moved by Counsel Wookiee. Seconded by Counsel Peter.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next, we move into reports of committees for this evening. The first one relates to a heritage alteration permit for the property at three forty-one Talbot Street. I have a motion that report MHC sixteen twenty-two relating to the heritage alteration permit for the property at three forty-one Talbot Street be received for information. And further, the council issue a heritage alteration permit for the property at three forty-one Talbot Street relating to application HAP fourteen twenty-two subject to the following. That the board and battens siding be sand in color and have a horizontal break between the first and second stories. Moved by Counsel McCully, seconded by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Second report relates to a request for alterations at the designated property thirty-six to forty-four St. Catherine Street, the former PUC building. I have a motion that report MHC seventeen twenty-two relating to the request for alterations at thirty-six forty-four St. Catherine Street. Be received for information. And further, the council consent to the proposed alterations to repair the concrete skirt, re-point bricks, replace windows, including mullion patterns similar to the original windows, repair, replace, and paint top limestone molding, and repair stairs at thirty-six to forty-four St. Catherine Street. And further, that notice of council's decision be provided to the Ontario Heritage Trust. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I, I think it's just great that that old building is gonna be renovated. They're really doing a great job on it. And, uh, I, I just happy to see it being done, so.
Yeah, looks good. All right, further questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Next item relates to a request for alterations for the property at forty Princess Avenue, the Princess Ave Playhouse. I have motion that report MHC eighteen twenty-two relating to the request for alterations at forty Princess Avenue be received for information. And further, the council consent to the proposed alterations to construct a new accessible ramp along the west and south facades and removal of the existing outdoor elevator on the north facade at forty Princess Avenue, subject to construction being substantially in accordance with the plans accompanying the subject request. And for the council, uh, notice of council's decision be provided to the Ontario Heritage Trust. Moved by Counsel Clark, seconded by Counsel McCully.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
Last item under reports of committees relates to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee Site Audit for the library. I have motion that report M A A C O two twenty-two relating to the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee Annual Site Audit Report at the library be received for information, and further, that report M A A C O two twenty-two be referred to the Accessible Technical Committee and Library Administration. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands. Seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Questions or comments? Counsel Clark.
Uh, thank you, worship. Uh, I'm just wondering when this would be, when we'd be able to get an update as to which of the things we can move forward on, kind of the timeline of when things would be taken care of.
Ms. Robinson, we don't get to have you here very often. Thank you for being here.
Do I have it? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the question. Um, we actually requested this specifically because I think, I don't think we were due until two thousand twenty-six. So we plan, uh, we have a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, and we plan to review all of the recommendations and then have a report and which we can pass along on what we can do and what we can't. Like, there are things like the, um, stairs need to be repainted, and, and we're having trouble with supply issues on that, but yes, we're very, um, keen to go forward with those, so.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carried.
No further reports this evening. Uh, your worship, we now move into petitions and communications. Uh, first item relates to a request for proclamation and flag raising from the St. Thomas Elmer Crime Stoppers. I have a motion that council of the City of St. Thomas proclaim I have a motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim January twenty twenty-three as Crime Stoppers Awareness Month in the city of St. Thomas. And further that the Crime Stoppers flag be flown at City Hall from January the tenth to sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item is a copy of a letter addressed to CN from the township of Warwick regarding contributions by CN to drain infrastructure projects under the Drainage Act. And next item is a copy of a letter addressed to Prime Minister Trudeau from the city of Stratford regarding funding to increase via rail services. And next item is a copy of a letter addressed to MPP of Algen Middlesex London. Also from Alison Warwick Chair and Grant Jones Past Chair of the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority regarding concerns with the proposed changes to the Conservation Authorities Act contained in Bill twenty-three, the More Homes Built Faster twenty-two Act. A next item is notice received from the Ontario Energy Board regarding an application by Enbridge Gas Incorporated to change natural gas distribution, transportation and storage rates effective January the first, twenty twenty-four. A next item is a actually two letters of congratulations following the twenty twenty-two municipal election. The first one is from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, congratulating council on its recent election. And the second is from Stephen Yelich from Enbridge Gas, also congratulating council on its recent election. Your worship, there's no, no other items under petitions and communications. Seeing none from the members, we'll now move into unfinished business of council. Seeing no items from the members, your worship, we'll now move into new business of council. Seeing no items from the members.
I'm, I have to congratulate the old St. Thomas Church and Counselor Peters for an excellent event yesterday at the, at the carol sing at the, at the old church. As you know, it can sometimes be pretty cold in there, but the warm hearts were there yesterday and and the good voices were brought along with them. So I can congratulate the team at the old church and, you know, it wasn't quite the same the last two years. Virtual apple cider and virtual cookies just isn't the same as being there in person. I thank you, Counselor Peters, for that.
Thank you, worship. If there's no further items, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
I have a motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Kohler, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee in the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that all those in favor? Carrie?
First bylaw, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the fifth day of December, twenty twenty-two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next bylaw, please.
Second bylaws, a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. This relates to the no parking zone on Bonnie Place.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next item, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. This relates to a turning movement, Moore Street at Talbot Street.
Questions or comments? Counselor Peters, please.
Uh, thanks very much, Madam Chair. Does this mean I've not, I'd like to know what is being proposed in this, in this bylaw amendment? Does this mean that left turn is going to now be allowed at Moore Street onto Talbot Street? And is parking going to be allowed on both sides of the street?
Mr. Lawrence, can you help us with that?
Unfortunately, I can't help you with that and I don't know the answer. And so it might be better for us to not approve that one tonight.
Okay, I'll go to our clerk.
Uh, your worship, the turning movement from Moore Street to Talbot Street is a left turn, so left turning would be permitted.
Now be permitted, okay? From more on to Talbot. Okay?
Yep.
But but you had a question about parking on Moore Street.
And and it, I was more concerned about whether we were going to allow left turns or not, and and I am comfortable with that. And and I'm prepared to support the bylaw and Justin can get back and uh, let me know. All right. Cause I have no issue with parking on both sides of the street either.
It's my understanding because of the, the, the Southern Press Building used to block your view. So a left turn was very hard to make without the Southern Press there and now the new open space. The left turn is is easier at, if I recall, that's what we're talking about here. Okay, so further comment? None? All in favor? Sorry, I'm, Counselor Baldwin Sands, this is your job.
Thank you. On the third bylaw, please. All those in favor? That item carries. Next bylaw, please.
I get carried away.
Fourth bylaws, a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and aired and bearless lawyers. This relates to integrity commissioner services until the end of December in twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next item, please.
Fifth bylaws, a bylaw to appoint a community emergency management coordinator for the city of St. Thomas, being Mr. Kyle Smith.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next item, please.
Sixth bylaws, a bylaw to amend bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight being the zoning bylaw for the city of St. Thomas. Uh, this is to remove the holding symbol in Miller's Pond Phase Five, Stage Two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Next bylaw, please.
Seventh bylaws, a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and one zero 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 two three four nine two six Ontario Incorporated. This relates to a site plan agreement, twenty-eight Steel Street for a four-unit apartment building.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. Eighth bylaw, please. Oh, sorry, no.
Uh, the eighth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and two five three seven six oh six Ontario Limited. Uh, this relates to a site plan agreement for the property at sixty-nine Curtis Street for a four-story apartment building with twenty-three units.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Counselor Peters, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just, just to comment. Sometimes I have issues with infill around the city of the appropriateness, but this one is a great example. If you haven't driven by it, this is a great example of infill. The way that they've structured the building, that it doesn't tower over neighboring houses, or at least it towers over one neighboring house, but not the other one. But it is a good example of how creative developers can infill in neighborhoods and this is twenty-three new units.
Thank you for those comments. Are there further comments from the committee? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. Next is the ninth bylaw, please.
The ninth and final bylaws, a bylaw to amend bylaw forty-five dash eighty-nine being a bylaw to revise and consolidate certain bylaws regarding traffic and the parking of motor vehicles. Uh, this includes the new right-of-way conduct additions to the bylaw.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? That item carries. I now rise to report the successful passing of the nine bylaws. Thank you.
Great.
Your worship, I have a motion by Counselor Peters, seconded by Counselor Kohler, that the reported council and committee in the whole on the nine bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Uh, your worship, there are no public notices this evening or notices of motion. May I suggest at this time that we have a recess to allow for the next meeting relating to the budget? After which we will have a motion presented to move into closed session.
So we'll work on the budget first and then close session at the end of the budget session. Okay, so let's call for a recess. I know Counselor Peters, you have to run pretty quickly, so let's say five minutes. Next, special council meeting. Special council meeting that has to do with the budget and I think we'll ask our treasurer to lead us off first.
Uh, thank you, everyone. I'm happy to present the twenty twenty-three proposed operating and capital budget. I have a little presentation here just to go over some of the, the highlights. There's a, we'll do some community context around the city. Some details about the citizen engagement feedback. The overall proposed operating budget summary, grants and COVID funding, review of long-term debt servicing requirements, economic reality and impacts on capital costs. A little bit on asset management plan and some of the proposed capital projects. City St. Thomas is a single-tier municipality within the county of Algen. Population of approximately forty-three thousand and it's continuously growing in the last number of years. Uh, municipal services are varied and delivered across the city and into the county, as in the case of social services and planning. Provincial and other municipal costs share in place to support some expenditures. Economic drivers include manufacturing, service industries and agribusiness sector organizations. So the city engaged citizens through a budget survey, which was conducted in October this year. Approximately six hundred responses were received. And here's a summary of the responses. Twenty-three percent had concerns about the level of homelessness in the city and the overall condition of the downtown area. Twenty-one percent saw a lack of health services in the city, including shortage of family doctors, health clinics and medical men- mental health services. That's spilling, I see. Thirteen percent identified concerns about the cost of rent in the city and the waitlist for affordable housing. Twelve percent would like to see an increase in service levels for police and ambulance. Eleven percent would like to see increased funding for recreation, including sports facilities, parks and trail systems. Ten percent would like to increase funding for municipal infrastructure and roads. Five percent would like to see increase in transit service within the city, but also service to other communities. Two percent express concerns about the city's direction in planning and development. Two percent would like more focus on the environment. And one percent would like to see more spent on arts and culture. So here we are. The administration is recommending a net levy increase of two point eight seven percent. So the twenty-three, twenty twenty-three recommended levy is an increase of almost two point nine million dollars over the twenty-two levy for an increase of four point six five percent. There is an impact of growth of one point one million dollars or one point seven eight percent, which leaves an adjusted levy of one point seven eight million dollars or two point eight seven percent. The one percent of tax levy is equal to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. If this is passed, it'll have an impact on, for property taxes on a median, single-family home of about eighty-six dollars a year or seven hundred and twenty dollars a month. Community grants included in the, the budget from, include the cemetery operating grant, St. Thomas Public Art Gallery grant, Talbot Teen Center grant, Senior Sender grant, and the amount left for council to to, for people that apply throughout the year. COVID funding. The province last provided safe restart funding in twenty twenty-one. There was some, going into twenty-two, there was some money left over, but it's expected that that money will be fully utilized in twenty twenty-two. And there's, right now, there's no plans for any additional funds at this point. Long-term debt servicing. So at the beginning of twenty twenty-three, we'll have approximately forty million dollars in long-term debt. The annual service servicing cost for that is around four million dollars, of which two point seven million dollars comes from tax levy. You can see that Valley View Home is the next one to, to be paid off and that'll be done in twenty twenty-six. That'll leave approximately eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of room in the levy. Construction costs. The last couple of years saw a dramatic increase in the cost of construction for municipal infrastructure projects. This is due to an in- increased demand for materials and general uncertainty around the pandemic. Seeing prices now stabilized, although higher than pre-pandemic prices may now exist, but at least they're now more predictable. Due to the rise in interest rates and the large amount of construction in the last two years, it's expected there'll be a drop in demand for construction in twenty twenty-three. As a result, it's expected the city will see more competitive, competitive bidding for twenty twenty-three capital projects. Administration is recommending twenty-four point three million dollar twenty twenty-three capital budget. This includes additional five hundred thousand dollars, which is from the city's strategic plan. This budget is quite a bit smaller than the last two years, forty-three million in twenty twenty-two and forty-one million in twenty twenty-one. It, it lacks additional funding that we had in those years from the province and large amounts from the development charges. Proposed projects have been reduced accordingly to match available funds. The Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund has announced there's an increase in funding in the new formula, new funding formula for twenty twenty-three. The city's allocation is not being announced. So an estimate was done for twenty-three. And if there's any difference, we'll make that up with an adjustment in twenty-four. That's all I have for that. The city engineer has a couple of slides on here to talk about, uh, capital projects.
Mr. Treasurer, will you answer a couple of questions now? Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. This is in regards to the survey. How long was the survey live and how many respondents did we have? And then I have a couple more questions.
The survey was live for, was live for about a month, almost a month, just under a month, and we had around six hundred responses.
Thank you. That was another question was how many respondents did you have? And how was there a mechanism to be able to identify a city resident when they responded to the survey? Was that done by their email address or how was that done?
There was just a question on there whether they were a resident or not. We didn't verify.
Okay. Further questions of the treasurer at this moment? Then we'll call on the city engineer.
Thanks. So we got great news about asset management. There's only one slide. So, so we'll be done quickly. Uh, the, the asset management process is mandated by the province. We're doing very well to meet that process. Uh, it requires that every year we update our full plan. And so in your packages, there's, there's the detailed plan. And as you're aware, there's a report card for each of seventeen major asset classes. In general, every year, the keys that council should be focusing on is what is the In general, every year, the keys that council should be focusing on is what is the annual surplus or deficit? So that's the amount we're either over or underfunding our assets. And then the second thing is what is our infrastructure gap? And obviously, you want to minimize both of those things. However, compared to most cities, I would say that we're in really, really good shape on both those fronts. So this year, we're at two-point-six million. We're generally underfunding on an instantaneous basis. But in the long term, we only have forty million of infrastructure gap. So that compared to the size of our assets, the one-point-two billion is very small, and it's a very manageable infrastructure gap to, to manage. And we see that in reality as we operate the system, so we're not dealing with a lot of assets that are breaking, falling apart. There's certainly assets in different conditions, but we're not in an emergency situation for any of these seventeen asset classes. So in general, great news about, about our assets, some conditions up, some conditions down. And obviously, we're, we're underfunding a few this year, and we actually have a few that are in funding and surplus. So it's best to look at long-term trends when you look at assets. The one that we've historically underfunded slightly is, is the road asset, because it's the easiest one to underfund, because you can take out large chunks of money all at once and remove those. In the end, those needs, they don't go away. They just get shifted further out into the future, and so you create a larger infrastructure backlog. The, the top five projects that we're recommending this year, our Complete Streets is the number one, and that has the components of Parkside and Bell, which is a sewer separation project. It also allows us to take out a pumping station, a sewage pumping station, so there's a lot of benefit to that one. Sunset Signal, we obviously, we talked about that one, Simcoe Coin, and then there's a series of sidewalk connections that we're making around the city. Talbot Street is a, is a large piece, of course. Equipment will always be a, a, a large project for us. It's, it's the ongoing replacement cost of everything that we own, so that includes all the fleet, the small fleet, the large fleet, and any equipment, larger things like, say, an excavator. Road Rehab started this process at two million, and through the administrative process, we've, we've tried to reduce that to keep the overall tax rate down as best possible. So we've taken a million off that to get it down to one million. We think that'll get us a mill and pave on Wilston, basically, from Love Days up to about Wellington Street. The airport runway is, of course, an important and a backlogged project, so this is the first phase towards getting that done. In addition to these ones, of course, there's a list that you have in your binders of the above the lines and the below the lines, and that's, that's typically the way that we express them. So with that, I leave it back to the, the mayor and, and to take it in any order, direction you'd like it.
Well, thank you for a great summary of where we are from an asset point of view, Justin, and it, and it really does help us think of what projects are best suited for our community right now versus some others. So if, with the, with the will of the, of the council, I think we should just go, I think in the last couple of years, we've gone to capital projects and kind of started there. Councillor Herbert?
Uh, thank you, Worship. I do have one question.
Go ahead.
For Justin.
Oh, sorry, he disappeared. So, so Justin, I see that the city owns one-point-two billion assets. How often is that updated? Is that every year, five years, ten years?
Thanks, yeah. Every year, varies by the asset. So for example, we do bridges every two years, but generally, most assets are updated annually. The asset management plan in total is definitely updated every year.
Okay, so we have, we have a number of ways we could look at this, but I'm going to try and keep the last couple of years in mind as to how we got there and how, how well we were able to do it. First of all, love the numbers you've presented so far as to where we are and what our, what our budget can look like. I thank the staff for the great work they've put into each of the departments, rolling them forward to make a, a total budget. Mr. Treasurer, your department on rolling it together to get us this, and I know the city manager plays a large role in it too. But the, the most, I, I guess the part that the council has to make a decision on, maybe more so, is the capital budget. So that's your, your large sheet. I know you've all looked at it, and it has a number of capital projects on it. And Mr. Lawrence just explained some of the more important ones that are on that list to us. Some of the deeper ones and some that have been put off for a couple of years to get us there. And we've, we've come up with about a twenty-four-million-dollar cost for those capital budgets, for those capital projects. And of course, on the back of that sheet is some that were asked for but weren't recommended for this year. So I guess the, the, the first question is, how is the council okay at approving the capital budget as it sits? Councillor, Councillor Baldwin-Simpson?
Thank you. I just would like to add one of the projects that was not accepted, and that is number forty on the descriptor on the not recommended for approval on twenty-twenty-three. It's page number forty, and the reasoning being it is the electric charging infrastructure for EVs. If we introduce them to the community and introduce them more so to our downtown, it has a direct effect on air quality. It helps our city reach our twenty-thirty targets. It has a triple bottom line benefit, so it benefits the environment. It has the potential to bring in new business, especially green business opportunities within the community. And it does have the social benefit, because it is something that the community is demanding that we do is take a better care of doing everything that we possibly can to help affect our air quality and quality for the environment. So for that reason, it is a cost of five-hundred-thousand dollars, to which one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand would come from the tax base. But we can also use this as a leverage to apply to senior levels of government, most specifically the Green Municipal Fund. I just attended on Thursday one of the events for the Green Municipal Fund for small and rural municipalities, and this is the direction that they are requesting small and urban municipalities to take and making that avail, money available if we do apply, if we encourage that this project be added. So tonight, I would like to encourage that item line number forty on the not recommended for approval for twenty-twenty-three, bringing in electric charging stations into the core of our downtown, more specifically in the back parking lot here, in the library area, the area that connects the new childcare center. I think it would be a great investment for the city as we're trying to green up and make our environment better. Thank you.
If I can kind of play tonight as kind of your emcee, one of the things we need to remember is that any six-hundred-thousand or thereabouts worth of cost is one point in tax increase. So when you're suggesting something be added to our budget, remember that that's the amount. You add six-hundred, if you add, if you add six-hundred-thousand, you'll add one point. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I will add again that the project is tax-based at forecasted in this report for a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, which is well underneath that threshold, less than one percent. Thank you.
Get there, but it's still, are, are you suggesting something of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand comes out? You're asking, you're suggesting an increase. Thank you. Well, councillor Peters?
Um, thanks, Worship. You know, I'm prepared to look at it, but I think if we're going to start bringing in new projects, I think we have to go exactly the direction that you're saying of if we're bringing a hundred-and-seventy-five in, where are we taking a hundred-and-seventy-five away?
That's how we, how we did it in previous.
We need to look at that, but I, I also, one of the things that's not clear in, in, in the report, particularly on the EV charging stations, and again, I don't know enough about them, like, are, is there, are these a revenue generator for us too? Like, is it like a parking meter where you come in and put a, a tunny in to charge your vehicle? Because if not, then we as taxpayers are going to be subsidizing these units. So I'd like to know more about them, how they, how they operate to, to see if there's any sort of recovery, because if there is a recovery, that may be a way to help come up with some of the hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand that is needed.
Mr. Lawrence, can you help us with that side of that really quickly, please? And we won't try to call on the department head too many times tonight, but.
No problem. You, you have that choice as council. You can set the rates to be totally free, or you can recover full operational costs and capital costs. I would suggest that we recover costs when we, when we put these out there, yeah, so it's a, it's like any other charger that you go to that you pay for it.
So the hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar cost could have, could be a zero net that we're asking for?
That's correct. You could, in theory, pay that off with future revenue.
Okay, then. I'll, we'll get there in just a sec. I saw, I saw another couple of hands. So councillor Kohler, councillor Clark, and then councillor Wookiee.
Thanks, your worship. I'll be honest with you, I'm prepared to pass the entire budget as is looking through it. I think, you know, council and staff have done a great job over the years to get us to a starting point like this. That's unheard of, I think, in most councils, and I know councils that I've been used, used to in the past. I remember when I first got on council, there, we'd be faced with sometimes fifteen, seventeen percent increases and having to go line by line and whittle them, whittle them down. So looking at this, I, I also looked at the, the capital budget and had some items that I thought I wanted to move up to, but certainly not at the cost of adding to the budget, because I think that's a fair increase that we're looking at right now, having gone through what we've gone through and, and making commitments to addressing our infrastructure deficit that'll only help us in the future. And I think when we look at budgets, we have to look at the first page and see what grow, growth actually means and the forward thinking of council to ensure that we have the ability to smart growth and, and, you know, look, instead of looking at a four-point-six percent increase, we're looking at a two-point-eight-seven because of growth. And some of the things that we actually are looking at for the future will continue to offset that even more. So in doing this budget, we, I think, have to be cognizant that we don't do anything to, to mess that up. So I, I too was looking at the EV, but again, as councillor Peters was looking, I didn't have a lot of information on it, what we were going to do, and I thought, would it be a revenue, could it be paid for by revenue? And was also looking at if it was something that we were going to be charging revit, like charging for it and possibly recover the revenue. Is it possible to fund it through the infrastructural new or reserve to have it added without putting any additional increases to the budget, but getting it finished? And then any revenue that would come from that would go back into that infrastructure reserve to replace that, so we could get that project done. And that was one of the only ones that I thought I could maybe come up with an argument to bump any of the other ones down, because at the end of the day, that's basically what we're doing. And sure, I'd like to see some others move up, but on the same token, I don't want to affect the proposed budget as it is with the increase and couldn't really come up with any other strong agree, arguments of moving anything up and taking any down. Did have some questions regarding the totals on the spreadsheet versus the totals on the up, uh, project sheets, but I was able to get that clarification from the treasurer today. So I thank him for, for that, and then also on the Barwick Street Bridge Design Two is able to get some clarification on that and the possibility of future contributions from developers if we choose to maybe go forward with that, but something that we have to partner with CN and, and obviously, for those reasons, not able to propose taking that out. So for myself, I'm totally open to that, but wouldn't mind having some discussion around if we could add that EV and fund it from the infrastructure reserve with the repayment of the revenue that we drive from it.
If I could ask a question if you, Mr. Lawrence, since it's, it's below our line, if you will, it's on the do-not-fund. Can we ask you to give us a report back to do exactly what councillor Kohler is asking? Instead of it having a cost of a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars, can we ask if we move this project forward in twenty-twenty-three, can we make it cost zero? Net zero is a nice term to use on this one. It can, can we make it that the cost of, of, of selling electricity to car users be the way we fund the infrastructure itself? Do, I, you may not be able to answer that tonight, but if you can, it's something that would be very helpful.
No, I appreciate the idea. I understand where you're going with it. It might be best for us to, to ask the treasurer how that, how that would work financially. I'm not sure if we need to decide tonight, or if we in theory could add a project in January, kind of thing, with a separate report. So I, I would suggest that we, we do a little bit of thinking about that, how to fund that at no cost.
Okay. I'm going to move on to councillor Clark, then councillor Wookiee, and we'll get their thoughts, and then we'll come back and clean it up. Go ahead, councillor Clark.
Uh, thanks, your worship. I appreciate the hard work that, that staff has done. Uh, but it still represents a point-five-two increase compared to last year's levy. We were at two-point-three-five, and now we're up to two-point-eight-seven. So I would like to challenge us to, to define three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, which is a half a percent, so that symbolically, we can come in at the same level. I think in this year, especially with the increased inflation for taxpayers, and when you look at the housing costs, their fuel costs, accommodations, just everything is going up. And in, in inflation is kind of an unknown in this first year of our term. I'd like to see us hold the line a little bit more, and I would not nitpick as to, you know, what's in or what's out. I would leave that up to staff who've done the overall work, but I'd like to see if we couldn't find three-hundred-and-ten-thousand and come in at last year's levy rate.
Thank you. Councillor Wookiee?
Thank you very much, your worship. I have three different topics, and they are not related at all, so here we go. I was contacted by some Talbot Street merchants, and I want to speak passionately on their behalf. If you are a merchant and you are near, say, Mary Street in Talbot, when Talbot Street was redone to the west of you, you were impacted. Yeah, okay. And then, and now there's, they're going to be impacted again because of the constructions being proposed for them, so they're getting a double whammy. Uh, this on top of COVID, on top of the issues that were surrounding four-twenty-three, and, and those other things, I want to say that for these merchants, it's very important for them that they, they feel they really need a one-year break so they can have, quote-unquote, "normal" business. And I want to make sure that I've expressed that point to council, that I, I've talked to Mr. Lawrence about this. I understand the engineering side of this, that it's, you know, these sewers are very, very old. But I also want to express the concerns of people in this community. I respect a great deal who, um, are asking for a break for a year. That's item one.
Well, can I, I'd like to answer that one, because as your representative on the Downtown Development Board, certainly the project of Talbot Street, Mary Street through Ross was to have done, been done last year. But because of COVID, the previous two years, we went to the merchants and asked them, and they said exactly what you just said, is that, look, we've been, we've been quite beat up, right? Can we put this off till next year? Then when we started to look at this budget again this year, we went to the Downtown Development Board again and said, are we putting this project off another year? That was one of the choices offered, or is it time now to do it? And we did share, as Mr. Lawrence has, that there's some pipes under that ground that are getting pretty near their lifespan. But we asked, and the answer came back to us, no, go ahead. And, and I, I'm willing to bet with you, it's not unanimous out there. It's, I know what's going to hurt the most, and I know when it's, and I, one thing I didn't take into, into account, councillor Wookiee, and thank you for saying, is those that are near where we last did the construction, now that's a decade ago, but those that are near that were affected during that construction and now will be affected in this one too. Right? But, you know, there's some, something to be said about there's never a good time. And so we went and asked as much as we can, and Mr. Lawrence, I, you can help me with this one. We have gone now to the merchants with a comprehensive how it will work, what will be closed, when, what, and we will continue to do that. Sorry, as a municipality and as an engineering department, it's a big project, and it's going down a number of feet. But they will be well informed as to what side of the street will be opened, when, 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 what will happen. So thank you for sharing the views of those you've spoken to too. Next item.
Okay. Look, I'm a guy who owns a two-thousand-and-five van, okay? I own a two-thousand-and-five van. So I say that I, I could squeeze the beaver off a nickel, all right? But I got to tell you, when I look at this budget, I see that, that we've had inflation, a significant amount of inflation in the operating budget, right? So when I take a look at the operating budget, it's, the operating budget loan is way higher than two-point-seven percent. All right, it's way higher. So what we've done is we've cut the capital projects to make sure this gets to be acceptable. So what I'm saying is- So what we've done is we've cut the capital projects to make sure this gets to be acceptable. So what I'm saying is our increase already is a fake increase. It's fake. So we've cut capital projects. And I appreciate why we're doing that. But I I want to call a spade a spade and say that we are sacrificing capital projects to do that. And I think it's admirable to want to do that. But in a time period where there's been this kind of inflation, um I think that there are things that uh. That should be done. And I'm not calling us a Flint, Michigan situation, but I am I am the harbinger of the future, saying we have to be very, very careful about cutting. Capital projects in order to satisfy a certain um a certain paradigm in our head about what increases should be. Uh that is one of the reasons I support what councillor Baldwin Sands is saying about the charging stations, uh as well as the fact that they may be revenue neutral in the long run. So I just want to say that I I think we got to be very careful. And and I'm willing this year to say, okay, okay, I get it. But I am, no offense to councillor Clark, I am in no feel no need to get this down lower. I think it's already lower. This sounds terrible. From a guy who studied economics, this is lower than it should be if we were to take care of our capital projects. The way I think we want to take care of them. But I'm I'm. I'm willing to live with what it is with the E V charging station in it. My third point, which is kind of related to that, is. I have a big issue with us because down the road, we are going to have to acquire land for things we want to do. All right? And let's say, let's say tomorrow Talbot and Ross came up for sale. And we think, oh, my God, that would be outstanding for us to. Own for for a uh for so we control because we know what happens sometimes when people buy land in the city. And then they control it, nothing happens to it. I would like to see a a mechanism as we go forward. Obviously, it's not right now, and obviously, the election just occurred. In order for us to strategically acquire land. I understand that there is five hundred thousand and there's increasing amounts that are put in the budget for things such as that. But when we are confronted with, as we expand. And assuming we're not going to get any land for our neighbors, um we're going to have to densify. And then if there's no free land left, if we want to do anything, we have to actually buy that land. And once that land is developed, then it becomes much more expensive and prohibitive. I'll stop right there and say that um I have great concerns about, for instance, down the road when we're really ready to do a recreation uh complex. Uh where is it going to be? And I think we have to really look down the road at this. Uh so I'm I'm I admire staff for our two point eight seven, if that's what it was, increase. But I am, I see some dark clouds that we're going to have to deal with. And that's um my position on it, and I I need us to look way down the road in the future. Because I don't think our population is going to be dropping anytime soon. And uh we will need, because of the public demand, more public services. So, you know, in my mind, I'd be. I would be willing to spend six hundred and twenty thousand dollars uh for one percent more increase if it was more work on roads. Whether it was capital projects that are um necessary, because I know that. Uh inflation has been higher than three point eight seven percent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Wookiee. I'll just I'll just really quickly. I'll go to councillor Kohler. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, your worship. I I just. And I don't know if staff wants to to talk on this too, because I I I totally get what councillor Wookiee is talking about. The capital budget, but. I think some of the the wording may not may. Could tend to lead people the other way, because if you look at it, there's multiple funding sources for the capital. We actually are increasing the tax funded portion to the capital by another five hundred thousand. Doesn't mean that we're actually reducing spending because our. Overall capital budget's less. It's because we're doing different projects that are funded through different buckets. So next year. Maybe we're going to do a whole bunch of other projects that include more development charges and all the other things. And and you'll see that that ebb and flow in there, but. I think it's important to note that we're actually increasing the capital spending of five hundred thousand on the tax funded. Yeah, yes, the overall is different because it's different. Projects that we're doing and funded through different budgets. And you'll see that fluctuate through over the years. So I I just wanted to make sure that that point. Was was made, and I also agree on the on the Talbot Street portion of it too. But I think another thing that we have to consider. If we don't do it with the aging of the pipes, we could end up with multiple unscheduled. Disruptions that are going to be even worse because we can't plan with the. The property owners if we don't proceed with this and and the pipes end up failing at that time. So I I know there's never ever a good portion. Or a good timing of it, but I think anytime we can plan, those repairs are caught more cost effective and and will benefit everybody in the long run.
Thank you. I was going to say that to councillor Wookiee and and thank you for bringing it up. We. The this council controls this in in the sense that our strategic plan is how we decide how some of this is happening. And councillor Kohler hit it hit it bang on. We have said over the la- and we have. Over the last three years and with this being the fourth year, added an additional five hundred thousand dollars to capital costs. In this community from the tax base without taking on new debt. I'm I'm pretty proud to be able to say that, but. Boy, it's it's glacial watching the asset base move forward because of it. But that's a big thing that this community has done. Using its growth to pay for that growth, and it's an it's a big piece of taxes, um but we have to look at that. Councillor Clark.
Thanks. I'd just like to remind us that the. Uh provincial average for a city for a household in the city is a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and fifty one dollars. But for the city residents in Saint Thomas, the household average is eighty thousand dollars. That's a twenty nine twenty nine thousand dollars difference. So when we talk about ability to pay. On the tax levy, I think we have to be aware of that.
Further questions on the capital budget? So far, I'm very pleased. We've really touched just a couple of things, which means the work done has been phenomenally good. So further questions, councillor Peters?
Uh Barwick Street Bridge.
Yep.
How hard have we pushed back at C N? You know, I read this report and it talks about, well, we're going to have to build the. Plan potentially plan of building the bridges in two pieces.
Yep.
But I remember when that deck was rebuilt on that bridge. I walked. I guess I broke another law because we walked along those railway tracks to get to Arthur Boden School.
Start collecting the.
But I remember when that was that that was redected and they put. A flat crossing in from the end of Baldwin Street to Barwick Street. C N did that. So I don't know, I don't understand, I in. I I walk up that area, ride my bike up that area regularly on Flores Street legally. And I don't see trains blocking that crossing.
Right.
I get blocked more at First Ave or Centennial than I than I do on Baldwin Street. Um and I I just, I I'd like to, I want to see us keep proceeding on this because I think it's an area it that does need to be developed. But, you know. To me, there's some onus on on C N to do something there because. I'd like to see, I want to see railway tracks go back in as well, too.
Yeah.
And but anyway, Justin, I'm just curious, is has C N put its. Line in the sand on this one, or is there some room for discussion?
Mister Lawrence, you go ahead, and I've got a bunch of thoughts on C N myself.
Uh interesting question. We asked that same thing. We explored it with them. Um I think they'd be okay with a level crossing. Uh because from their perspective, the trains would keep going all the time. They wouldn't be blocked. Um it's really that from the city's perspective in terms of emergency management. So we did a study of. The amount of time that it is blocked per day on average. Um and it 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 would probably be um like two times seven minutes or something. So. Uh we we've concluded internally that we think that's really unacceptable for our emergency services, the only way in. So for, you know, seven minutes and seven minutes, no one can get in or out. They would go for it, I think, but I I wouldn't recommend it for ourselves.
Well, your worship, just to to follow through it, and I'd like to know, there's, yes, there's been increased in active train activity. Because Element Five is now bringing in train cars. There's more propane coming in for dollar car and there's propane going. But a lot of that tra- that train traffic is coming down the old C P line on Ontario Southland. It's not even coming down. There's a train a day uh a day each way pretty well. Comes in at eleven o'clock at night because I can hear it at night and it, you know, and so it's a format train in and a format train out and. Occasionally some propane coming in, but. I just, you know, I I look at the the capital cost of a of a bridge versus a level crossing and. That could find us a whole bunch of capital money down the road. But anyway.
Well, I'll give it another shot since I've been dealing with C N since I was twelve, it seems. Um certainly a number of decades, and I know councillor Peters, you you helped a lot as the provincial member of parliament back in those days. But there's a certain number of cars that can be. Used on a track in a given day before it can no longer have a level crossing on it. We don't make those rules. C N does. They're a country amongst themselves. But they continue to tell us the number of cars using that. Area underneath the Barwick Street Bridge is more than the number of cars that would be allowed on a on a level crossing. Now, we can overrule them, I suppose, but then the emergency management side of us doing it that way, as Justin has just said. Maybe um. Well, you said you could do it. And anyway, I I I've been present with with Mister Lawrence. Uh our city manager and going back over this first, the first term of council, a number of times with C N. I if I can feel. In here, I think they're getting close to wanting to cooperate with us and open up that piece of land that's that that could be used by us. In there, uh but. Right now, if if we're planning to do it, we have to look forward to some cost to rebuild the bridge. To do it. There will be the development charges cost extra in that. Area in behind the Barwick Street Bridge. Uh and I'm sure would love to have that infill piece to to be able to do it. I agree with you one hundred percent. It's a piece of property in our community. That could easily be used for housing at a time when we have a housing crisis. Councillor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Well, I I can't disagree with what the councillor Wookiee says about Talbot Street, but I I think anytime it can be planned, as. Councillor Kohler stated, I think it's something we we should do. Because I just can't imagine what would happen in July. If there's a big rainstorm, the sewers all back up, they got to start digging up Talbot Street to fix it. Think of the cost of that. And if we put it off another year, we've really spent a lot of extra money just to 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 rubber stamp to make it work. So. So I I I'm in support of uh, we have a plan. It's been put off a year. Uh I can see there's two sides of the story. We councillor Wookiee talked to someone, you're on the downtown environment board, and they're saying, let's get it done. I I I would support, let's get it done.
Not universal, Jim.
No, no, I know. I understand that you got two sides, but there's always going to be two sides. And and I'm just thinking. We planned it, we put it off a year. Oh, how good would we look if we didn't follow the engineers' report that uh it's time to replace them? It needs to be done. And we had this, I can't imagine what it would cost to have to dig up Talbot Street for. Four weeks to get it all done and then do it again the following year. So anyway, I. It's a tough call, but I I I think it's still the direction we need to go to get that done.
Thank you to keep us going. Councillor Peters, I interrupted you after your one point. Did you have more points on the capital besides the Barwick Bridge? Okay. Great. So I I'm I'm looking for more points on the on the capital budget. That's work. Boy, I've got to commend you all. Fantastic. Councillor McCully?
I just have a question about number forty one, not recommended for approval, about one password irrigation installation. What are the impacts to the fields if this isn't done?
Mister Bray, I guess you you got to help us with this one. I guess this is irrigation that was not put in during the construction of one password with that we. Saw last year in a very dry summer being pretty needed.
Thank you, Mayor Preston, and thank you for your question, councillor. Um as you know, our summers are getting drier. Uh last year, we had a bit of a extended drought period, so the grass. You 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 have, I'm assuming you have a front yard, it dries up, you get some rain, it comes back. Um in a normal situation like that, um. It's not a safety concern, but. In a field, uh it can impact play, it can impact safety. As. For the notes that were provided, we did look at have a temporary irrigation. It wasn't feasible. Um and I think we saw it started raining um towards the end of the season and the the fields did come back. So it's really just to help the. The strength and uh resiliency of the turf. So does that answer your question? Thank you.
But taking our chance on the rain falling at the right time. Councillor Clark?
Uh yes, a follow up question on the same project. I was just wondering why it wouldn't be uh eligible for any developmental charges, the the. With the the growth in the city. Uh you know, the the idea that growth pays for growth, why? Why a project like that wouldn't be eligible?
Because I I two two reasons, and I'll maybe ask Mister Bray, but it it's still pretty new. We just did it. Why didn't we do it? As part of a part of building it. And second, the the parks are being separated out of development charges now as a in in. How development charges work in our community. So but I'm not certain adding irrigation to an existing park is. Is a development charge. But just me.
Yeah, I just, do we know that definitively? Like, it's it's an upgrade of service to.
Right. Mister Mister Treasurer or Jeff, I I see you're shaking and and so I I I think I've I've hit on where we are today on the charges. Go ahead.
Uh thanks. Uh that park really. You're right, parks aren't really eligible anymore under development charges. And it's it's a new. Service to the city too, so it wouldn't be uh eligible for a very small amount of development charges. So that adding. Uh that irrigation wouldn't be uh, we couldn't use development charges for it.
Okay. Um if Gary, if you have another, go ahead.
Uh just. But you could use reserves.
Right. Oh, yes, of course, for anything. Councillor Gibson is next, and then councillor Peters.
Thank you, your worship. Oh, thank you, your worship. Um in lines number ten, recommended approval. Uh the Barwick Bridge. Can we not delay that? I I know it's been delayed. Over and over, correct? If I'm not mistaken, it's been before cancelled before. But I I'm thinking, you know, with the new strategy for new housing, the urgency of it with that piece of land there. Could we not try and and work a deal with them and probably this year, the twenty twenty three, that we could maybe work something out with them that. They can pay up part of the cost of doing the bridge with the extension with the land that's there with us.
Yeah, I think you'd find that this cost includes the developer on that that owns that piece of land also contributing. It's built into that, right? Um my my. I I I guess my trepidation, and I hope it's Mister Lawrence's too, if we get C N to say yes, we better be ready to go at that moment because. Uh who knows a week later if they'll come back and say no, and that that to me is part of why we want to be prepared. Councillor Gibson?
Your worship, so could we not take three hundred and break it break it down to half and then see what C N will bring back to us then for next year?
Well, I'll ask Mister Lawrence if there was only a hundred and fifty in that project and C N finally said yes, would we be scrambling to find the other?
Um thanks. It's a tough question. Uh. The design is underway because it's C N's bridge and they decided to proceed with the design already. Um what what we're calculating here is that we're presuming what our share may be at the completion of the design. Um it's hard to say how long that will take. Originally, the last time I spoke to them, which was about six months ago, they intended to build it. In uh twenty twenty three. Uh but we've seen nothing since then, and we we haven't budgeted for that amount either, so that's not even possible. It's so to answer your question, could we defer half of it? Possibly, but we. I think we'd come up short on on our share for paying for the design.
Okay, councillor Peters?
Thanks, worship. Um Emslie Park Lights. You know, I I can't find.
Is it on the yes or no?
It's on the yes list.
Okay.
Two hundred thousand.
Right.
You know, I look at, I can't find out, I can't find in the operating budget the expenses. I I see we generate. We're going to, we're budgeting seventy two hundred in in revenue for rental. The last year it was fifty one hundred. Like, can we not get more life out of these lights? Like, I just, they they can't be used that often. And it it's just. You know, I I and they're only ten years old, from what I think if I read that correctly. And I just, you know, I I just look at, and and I realize it's a premier bald diamond and it's the second oldest bald diamond. It it's certainly in Ontario that's continually used on the same site. But it's also a pretty hefty expenditure when it's going to take us. Uh. A lot of years to recover our costs just based on the revenue and that and that's only revenue, as I say, I couldn't find the expenditure in here. So. Anyway, can we get some more life out of those lights?
Mister Bray?
Uh thank you, Mayor Preston. Uh, thank you, Mayor Preston. We can get more life out of them, it's just with the caveat that, um, the, the ballast, uh, component, the ballast is the yellow, the part of the light fixture that regulates, uh, the flow of electricity to the lamps. Those ballasts are no longer available, so if a ballast is a replacement part, they typically last about five years, ten years. So if the ballast goes, we don't have a replacement part, so we'll see the light quality starting to diminish as they go. So actually, I'm wrong, they, they last longer than that, they should last twenty years, but the issue is they do not make the part for those lamps anymore. So, um, it's, it, it's just a cautionary warning that as the ballast, uh, need replacement, we can't replace them for those fixtures.
Okay, folks, we're at the, sorry, Counselor Clark?
Just while we have Jeff there, um, how many, how many nights a week or, or hours would that ball diamond be used in comparison to the fields that we're talking about for the soccer? So I know I'm gonna tick off the ball people and, and, and maybe the, the soccer people will be happy, but it's almost a trade-off of, it's almost a trade-off in terms of costs, so I'm just wondering what would give us, uh, better use of those dollars and, and, uh, provide more safety for the greatest number of kids?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. You're putting me on the hot seat now.
Yeah, who do you love?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I would, I'd have to look at the numbers honestly, but I would think that, uh, those fields are used all through the day at One Password, that, um, and I'd, I'd, uh, as I said, I'd have to look to see if there's any day programming consistently, like there is at One Password through the summer. Um, for the, for Emsley Field, I think that's a primarily a, a nighttime, you know, evening going into dusk type facility, whereas One Password, the fields there that would be proposed to be, that are proposed to be irrigated would be through the day, if they're not lit, right, so. In the evening, weekends. I'm not sure that answers your question, but.
Well, I just, uh.
I don't know what the usage is comparative.
Yeah, I just, my assumption is that there's a lot more use on the, um, on the soccer fields by every day, every evening and weekends, whereas the, the Emsley Field is, is restricted more to a couple levels of, uh, of teams that, that use it, and so it's sitting there a lot.
I would agree.
Empty a lot.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Yes, I would agree that, uh, soccer fields or pitches are used more. And following what Counselor Peters is saying, the, the lights are working, we're just trying to be, uh, more, um, proactive and replace the system there.
So if I could ask the question, are you suggesting swapping the two, one from the red list into the green list and saying, let's do this one this year and that one next year? Was that your?
Yes, that's what, where I was going with this.
Okay. All right. With that in mind, the suggestion that Counselor Baldwin Sands made in addition to the, to the, to the budget, adding a hundred and seventy thousand, what others, and all the other comments we had and a number from Counselor Wookie too. Can we, are we willing to accept this with the light for irrigation swap? And I don't think it, that, that price is about the same, am I close? Yeah, okay. And the electric charger piece at a hundred and seventy, but with the, with the caveat that we're looking for it to be a cost recovery piece, so although we're moving it into the green to get it started, uh, it will be at least recommended back to us on that there would be a cost recovery on the sa- sale of, of electricity. So I, I mean, I guess what I would suggest is that we don't move the hundred and seventy in, but we ask Mr. Lawrence to start that project and come back to us. Because I'd hate for us to say, let's move a hundred and seventy in and it's not spent, go ahead.
Thank you. Is there a risk if we don't pass it? Could we apply for those senior levels of government funding that are providing funding for projects such as this?
I think that should be in the report coming back to us. If there's ways of covering the cost of doing this, it probably shouldn't be the taxpayer. If there are other ways of us covering, so let's, let's check whether the other levels of government are there for the infrastructure side for the lots you mentioned, and what would we charge for the electricity on a cost recovery over how many years to make that cost be covered? So, Art, are you okay with how I'm saying this? Because, yeah, I'm, I'm putting a lot of work on you. All right. If, if, if that's all we did, we swap the lights for the irrigation and add in a project on EV charging, we have this budget we could pass today, the green page, the capital budget. I would need someone else to say it besides the chair. Go ahead.
Uh, uh, you're saying just the capital portion?
Capital budget right now, I'm gonna give you the other one real quick after the capital budget, but.
Okay.
C- Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Are you requesting a mo- motion? If so, I will put motion on the floor.
To, to, uh, then I would suggest that it say something like, we accept the capital budget as written with the change for the lights at Emsley versus the irrigation at Password and a project to move forward on EV charging. Great, so I have a mover and a seconder. Questions or comments? Counselor Clark?
I'd just like to note again that I think we should be looking to, to cut out three hundred thousand so that, um, we are not increasing the levy in, uh, the extra half percent that, uh, and we hold the line at last year's level.
Okay. You've heard the suggestion, so you're suggesting that's all, that's done on capital?
I don't care how it's done.
Okay.
It, it could be a combination, but I.
I like your thought.
I, I think we need to do that work.
Okay. Well, everybody having heard Ca- Counselor Clark, further discussion? Seeing none, on the motion that was presented on capital expenditures. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Got it. So that's carried, we've got a capital budget done in pretty good order, thank you very, very much. The next piece that, that, that would now come is we're sitting at, as, as has been pointed, two point eight seven percent. Um, a, a, an operating in point increase and, and Counselor Wookie, you're absolutely right, we're not really there. But that's where we are, but with growth, we're there, all right? Counselor Clark, you've suggested some other reduction to that number, down to about two point three seven, I think was last year, so about a point five, yeah?
I, I would suggest unless there's a few little items here, uh, that we just take it out of reserves and, and maintain the level, and then if there's any surplus at the end, they go back into reserves.
Counselor Peters?
Well, I. I don't want to just put my hand up and vote to this budget right now, I've got a bunch of questions that, and some of them may actually come up with some potential revenue to, 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 uh, so, you know, I'm.
Okay, I, I wasn't asking for the question right now.
So I just wanted to make sure.
But you've got a number of things, go on them.
Okay, thank you very much, worship. Um, let's, uh, I, I want to focus on revenues. Um, on, on a number of fronts. You know, one, if you look at, uh, page seven of the Treasury Report, it talks about budget performance. POA revenues, POA revenues are down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. There's halfway to what Counselor Clark is talking about. And the police chief sent us a really interesting link, I don't know if any of you looked at it, of what they're doing in London of automated speed enforcement.
Yeah.
I don't know what the capital cost is of something like that.
It's significant, but.
But there's recovery on that, there's recovery on the capital costs, there's recovery on provincial offenses revenue. And if we're gonna, if we're focusing on our police services being on the street and doing those things that we really want them to do, uh, and if, as, as we seeing in this, if, if revenues are down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we've got to find a way to recover some of that. So, you know, I'd love to see a report back from staff or the police chief on a little more about what they're doing in, in London. I don't know whether this is just a fancy way to say, uh, photo radar, I have a feeling it is, but, you know, but it's also red light cameras too. I, I travel to London for the food bank every week, I go, one of the routes I take, three red light cameras on that route. Um, you know, are there ways that we can help support our police services, help make our community safer? And by taking advantage of some technology, so, um, I'll, I, I have others that I want to raise, and I don't know whether you want me to go through my list or just raise these one at a time, because somebody else may comment on.
I know the chief is on, we could ask him that question. Uh, Chief Herrich? If you're listening to me, I see your microphone come on.
Hi, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Can I have the, uh, question from Counselor Peters again, please?
Yeah, the, the, the question is, is, is provincial offenses revenue is down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're only, we, we would budget two hundred thousand, we're only gonna get seventy-five. You sent us a, an email about a project in London of automated speed enforcement, and I'm just curious, I took a look at that. Um, and I'm just curious of whether that could be something applicable and usable here to help support police services as well as the potential for red light cameras.
Absolutely, and that's why I sent that along, Counselor Peters, I totally agree with automated speed enforcement, especially in those areas that we, we know are problem areas in our city, we get constant complaints, IE Sunset Drive is one of those locations. And with the increased calls for service of eight thousand since twenty fifteen, that our members, along with increased property crime, are tied up doing investigations. And that causes a reduction in an opportunity to look after road safety initiatives. And I totally support automated, uh, speed cameras in those areas that can identify as, um, problem areas.
Chief, it's the mayor, and I, I, I know you and I have had this conversation, the cost of those cameras upfront and certain criteria that they have to also meet. Um, this is a self-funding project over time, but there is a front-loaded cost on this?
Absolutely, I would totally agree, and I know in other municipalities, it is the municipality themselves that look after researching and installation of automated speed enforcement or red light cameras, but I can't speak to the upfront cost.
Okay. So Counselor Peters, if it's okay with you.
I'm happy with the report back on, on this one to look at, at it as a potential revenue.
Or, or bringing POA costs back to what, where we once were, rather than just accepting that they've fallen that far. Great. Your next item.
Next item, it, it, next item, uh, that relates to is, um, a point that was raised by another member earlier this evening, and, and that is vacant lands. And I'll use that parcel at Talbot and, uh, Ross Street as an example. That I'm sure the owner of that property is paying a pittance on the true value of that property, that, that is an extremely valuable piece of property. We have a lot of brownfield sites around the city, vacant land sites around the city, and again, I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I'm looking at it, is there a way that we can help to, um, encourage redevelopment of those sites by finding ways to, uh, increase taxation, um, on, on vacant lands, especially good.
Or vacant buildings.
Or, or vacant, or vacant buildings. Um, to, to try and encourage redevelopment of those sites, and are there steps or mechanisms that we can put in place to, uh, you know, I drive along Center Street. We need affordable housing, I realize we own some of those, we may own some of those parcels, but there's a, there's tremendous opportunity on the, the north side of Center Street to make something happen.
Yep.
How can we, what moves can we make as a city to help make something happen?
Okay, uh, if you want, I'll let you know we are already having conversations on some of the things you're talking about, and they're not instant, but we also, we have to make it punitive to the people who own property in our community and don't do anything on it. We, we have to make that, some incentive for them to either sell the property to somebody who will or to build on it themselves, or lease it to someone else and let a building take place, you're, you're smash on.
Okay, and my, my other one, uh, uh, the other one on the revenue side is, and I know I've raised this one before, and it is user fees. You know, our costs are going up, you know, insurance is up, electricity's up, fuel to run Kubota's is up, and, uh, you name it. Um, I don't think it should be the taxpayers as a whole that have to eat those costs. I think that there is an onus on individuals using the units, uh, you, at these facilities, I look at, we're subsidizing the tune of well over a million dollars, probably pushing two million dollars, just arenas alone. And I, I think that it, it, in fairness, that we need to, uh, adopt a user-paid principle. If somebody's child chooses not to play utilized arena, but would rather go and take advantage of, uh, programs at the St. Thomas Art Center, the level of funding that we're providing to subsidize an arena user versus the level of money we're using to someone to go take painting lessons at the, at the art center, it's not even close. So I, I just, I, I've asked for this, I asked for this last year at budget, I've asked again, uh, um, at, at a session, and I'm gonna ask again that we have a comprehensive review of user fees in this municipality, looking at other municipalities to make sure that everyone is paying its fair share. Uh, and, you know, I, um, and to Counselor Clark's point earlier that, you know, I guess me raising that, I'm gonna get baseball, soccer,
hockey.
Hockey, figure skating, everybody mad at me, but I, I just, I, I think it's, it's, it's our responsibility to, to fit into what Counselor Clark is saying to some, uh, a, a community with an eighty thousand medium household income versus a provincial average of a hundred and nineteen thousand. I think we've got to push back on, on some fronts, so I just ask again for comprehensive review of user fees.
Mr. Bray, this is mostly parks, I guess, but there are a number of other user fees that we have, but where are we on that study? I know we, we, we kind of started down that road. If you would.
Thank you, Mayor Preston. Uh, I know there was a user fee review, um, that was with Matthews predecessor, he started with us, we're starting a best practice to see what other jurisdictions are charging versus what our operational costs are that Counselor Peters were, uh, uh, mentioned, so we will be bringing that back up. Uh, all the user fees, it's my understanding, Dan, they were, uh, frozen for two years. So it is high time that, um, we, we did do a review, this will be coming up in twenty twenty-three.
For sure. This council can look forward to great new revenue news. Great, thank you, Counselor Peter.
Okay, thanks, your worship. Um, my only other comments would be, um, uh, regarding on page, uh, forty-four of the EDC budget. Um, talks where I know we're hiring additional staff. I, I just would ask Sean and, and the team at the EDC, how do we better utilize and potentially generate more revenue for the Horton Market? I look at that Christmas event that took place there, and that's one Saturday, or one extra Saturday. That facility is an amazing facility and it sits vacant six days a week. And there has got to be a way with EDC and the community that we can find new ways to generate new revenues at the Horton Market, and I just, I'll leave that one at that. Um, just wanted to comment as well on Cemetery Art Center, Senior Center and Steam Center, who are all, um, have the separate budget line. Every other budget in the city is getting an increase, our own municipal bud, council's budgets going up, everybody's budgets going up. Yet, we have, uh, frozen the budgets of the Cemetery Art Center, Steam Center and Senior Center, holding the line on those budgets. The numbers allocated in the budget are exactly the same that were allocated last year. And why are we treating them any differently? If we, if we've made a decision previously that's gonna look at, if, if we're looking at a X number of percentage increase in a, in a budget for a municipal program, why can we not look at the same thing for at least those four entities? And, um, my, uh, my last one that I wanted to comment on, and I don't know if there's any recovery, one of the things that struck me going through the parks budget is the amount of budget lines all through this on page twenty-seven, twenty-eight of graffiti removal, graffiti removal, graffiti. All through this on page twenty seven, twenty eight of graffiti removal, graffiti removal, graffiti removal. I don't ever remember seeing that. In an operating budget before and cleanup costs, and you know, I realize the courts aren't, our police services does its part, and our courts aren't helping us, but. Boy, if we can catch some of these culprits that are, um you know, especially on the graffiti front, if we can. Recover uh from Provincial Offenses Act, um I don't know, I don't know, can they be charged, they're charged with vandalism, but it just troubled me to see that. And the other one that I'll close with is um, I I noted that um there's some budget uh. Lines on trees and anything that we can do to. Uh encourage more tree planting in the city. I know we just received a grant for planting trees, but if we can do more. Um and put more onus on developers to be planting trees as these subdivisions are being built and uh. You know, and I'll I'll go back to my, the one that has troubled me is Elma College. Elma College, we know, has to plant a bunch of trees, and if we're going to continue to wait, could be ten years for redevelopment. Those trees could have been in the ground two years ago. And uh so if we're going to push back on vacant lands, what can we do to push back on? Lands that um should be replanted with trees that aren't being replanted with trees. Thanks.
Further discussion from council on the operating budget, Counselor Kohler, then Counselor Clark, come back to you.
Thanks, your worship. I I I totally agree with uh Counselor Peters. I think there's lots of opportunity for increased revenue, and I know. When I was going through this, I I certainly looked at everything and. Coming short of my usual target of the winter maintenance budget that I know probably will get Justin worked up again, but I. Promise I'm not going to mention that, other than the fact that it's December fifth, and we've had no snow and haven't spent any money on it yet, so. But having said that, we'll probably be hit by a huge blizzard, so I I personally think. As good as I think this budget is, I see I see a a a reserve, or not a reserve, a surplus coming in it because. I know my crystal ball wasn't all that clear, but I I think we're light on the revenue in in different areas, and I I. I think we could meet Counselor Clark's target, and I support uh adjusting it. But in a, I I think more in a fair way that we identify the 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 money coming from a reserve and any. And then replenished from a surplus that comes forward. I think when we look. At how we positioned ourselves for growth coming forward, we have some substantial revenue coming down the road. That could even offset if we miss target of of three hundred thousand dollars if we meet that. Uh target without increasing or decrease decreasing any level of service, because personally myself, without looking at. Potential revenue increases, anything else results in a decrease of service, which I don't think anybody wants to do on the operating side, so. Personally, myself, I would support Counselor Clark's suggestion of reducing it by the three hundred thousand and. Funding it through uh reserve and replacing it from surplus.
Counsel Clark, then Counselor Wookiee.
Uh thanks for those comments, Jeff. Um a small one uh on page three. Um and that was just the um twenty thousand dollars for the um. Where is it, strategic planning process? Um I I think we could handle that ourselves. I I know it's a small amount, but. We've got last year's strategic plan that we've got a number of items that we didn't accomplish that we we can review. We just had a citizens engagement um through the budget process. We just had a number of people commenting over the um, the campaign recently in the election, so we know what people were highlighting. That they wanted us to see move forward on. Uh we just had a new hire in that department, which is a strategic planning and development person, so. And I think there's enough expertise around this table that we've been through the process a number of times and. And some people in in former positions have done a lot of this work. I think we could handle it ourselves and. Put the twenty thousand towards what Counselor Peters was saying and upgrade the, at least put that money towards the grants that. Uh didn't get a bump up, and uh it wouldn't cost the budget anything.
So I, Counselor Peters or Counselor Clark, can somebody tell me if 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 you're looking to add two point three percent to the. Or grant amounts, what amount are we talking?
Well, that I I think for me personally, it's whatever the tax increase is going to be, that should be added, but. I I don't know whether we even gave those those entities an opportunity to to submit a budget, because perhaps they may have asked. For more money and and had justification as to why they would uh would need it.
Mister Treasurer, do you know what the amount would be if that was the case?
Uh thank you. Uh so two of the four did get increases this year, the cemetery. Um that cemetery one was overlooked, and it'd be a difference of around eleven hundred dollars. And the plan was, there's a, there's a enough money to take out accounts of grants, presumably they don't get used up. That we would uh bump up the cemetery to, uh that's what we agreed to in last year, the year before, that. Those grants would get whatever the net tax increase was every year, so we we'd still make that happen. There's enough money in there already.
In the grant account.
And the only one is uh Senior Center has been stuck there, because at that time, there was a study going on to see what was going on, so. There's been no increase put on that money.
Okay, so, kind of covered, but Counselor Clark, more? That's all you had? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you. This is partly a budget item, partly a governance item. Um and uh I want to take the heat off Counselor Peters for not making friends tonight, so I will not make some friends as well. If I fail to do that so far. I find it interesting and unusual, and there's people around the table that have a lot more direct business experience than I do. That we don't employ K P I's for every single department in the city. Um I know that's not a budget discussion, but I'm sitting here as a retired history economics law teacher. And I'm making operating budget decisions, doing the best I can, right? But I think that. If we want to be as professional as we can be, I believe that we should have K P I's for. Every department, frankly, everybody's getting city money. It's my understanding that in a lot of businesses, that's the way it operates. I know that. Creates an onus, but I'm I have confidence in our departments and directors that it won't take them too long to put together. Uh a sample metric, and I just want to put that as, this has nothing to do with tonight, this is down the road of. Something to for perhaps for the leadership team to talk about. Um moving forward. I think we have the capacity to be able to handle that, but it would be very handy for me if I could look at K P I's from different departments and say that. You know, somebody's initiating a change to uh raise a level, and perhaps that would. Uh generate a necessity for their budget increase by a certain level to achieve that um that index. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, and I think we can also have that discussion again in our strategic plan also, looking forward to our own measurement. But Counselor McCully?
Um, thank you.
You have the um, I just need to share that you have the Jim Herbert problem, that sometimes I can't see you.
No problem. Um I agree with identifying additional opportunities to find revenue, and I also agree in trying to further. Lower the levy if we can, and three hundred thousand seems attainable. One question that I had. Um just one number that really stuck out for me, and there may be the rationale behind it, I I. Is the, if I've missed it, the contracted building maintenance um on page thirty seven. Um for public housing, so it is a hundred and five percent increase, so. Um it's gone up substantially, and I'm just curious as to what's driving that, and. Um is there opportunity to lower that at all?
Mister Treasurer?
Thank you. Um that, that budget line was missed in the past. And so that's a couple of years of catching up. Property maintenance is spending that kind of money already on to keep upkeep the uh. The uh properties up in in that line. I combined two lines there, so there's a a negative three eighty. And and so it it's not that big of an increase, right? So um yeah, it's deemed that we need that. That because that's what it costs to uh to fix the public housing.
I was just looking at big ticket items and trying to figure out where we could.
Thank you. And and I almost dislike it, just so you know, when we get into, okay, now let's find fifty three cents, but. Um it's truly not our job, our job is governance, and the people who we govern have told us, these are their budgets, and we can ask them good. Good questions on it. Further questions on the budget, on the operating budget? I know we're 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 working with a a number of two point eight seven. Counselor Clark has given us a goal, and we we love his rallying karate, and he's done it a couple of years for us. Can we just find? A, an amount there. Uh my my question was in the stabilization fund. We have a fund to stabilize, so we don't do large tax increases. This is a year where we're seeing a larger tax increase. Counselor Peters?
Well, your worship, I I'd be prepared to support dipping into the reserve to achieve the goal that is is here. But adding a codicil to it, that upon comprehensive uh reviews of user fees. Reports back on uh automated speed enforcements.
That they replenish.
That they, that that they, they they would go back and replenish tho- those reserves. Um same as moving forward with with Counselor Baldwin's stance is, Kate. Uh we can find the money to pay for it, but we've got to find, uh and if we're going to do that. We've got to put that money back in, put it back into the bank, so we're going to borrow from the reserves and. We put that money back in, because I'm sure when Jeff comes back, there's probably going to be an increase in a a report in. User fees as one example.
Mister Treasurer, I was about to call you, because I hate ever talking about using reserves without you telling me. Um that they're in fine shape and could be done, so.
So the problem with that strategy is if we add reserves to the budget. Next year comes around and we don't have that reserve, we're already behind, so what we're doing is pushing this tax increase off another year. So if we put three hundred thousand from reserves in this year, presumably, we're not going to do it again next year. So that line goes to zero next year, so we have to make up another three hundred thousand next year.
Yeah, the the reserve I was talking about has a million nine in it.
Yeah, that that reserve is for property tax stabilization, so yeah, but.
I think that's kind of what we're talking about correctly.
Yeah, but we we use that for large write-offs and that, and there is.
Always for that.
Yeah, when we have tax appeals, in we're, we will be presumably coming up on a new phase of. Um. Assessment, yeah, so then that'll trigger some more appeals.
I don't want to do something that puts us in a bad light in number of in in years going forward, but I just wanted to make sure what that was for. Counselor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship, and I think picking the reserve obviously would be wherever it comes from, right? But but again, the pre- the preference is that, and the premise is all based on. I I think around the table, we think revenue is low. I think there's some opportunity already for surplus built into this budget. Already, and so I think that's what we're saying, is that the three hundred thousand is basically already built into the budget. But identify it from a reserve with exactly what Counselor Peter says, it will be replenished based on that. If we do miss the target by a hundred thousand or whatever, when we look at what we are preparing for the future, I think there's. All kinds of opportunity at that time to replenish those those reserves at that time, but but I I feel strong that we can definitely. Uh make that up and and replenish those those reserves at the end of the day, and. And um especially with the suggestions that Counselor Peter's looking at and and moving, moving forward, I it's it's not. I I I think remaining competitive will help even drive growth that we aren't preparing for right now. And and that'll, that'll um continue to 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 bear fruit, so that I I totally support that that direction and uh. Knowing full well that it's it's only an earmark and will be replaced by the end of the year.
Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. This would be for Treasurer. If if we left it at two point eight seven, what would be the cost to the average homeowner? On their taxes, and I say a five hundred thousand dollar home, what would it cost for a year?
Mister Treasurer, it's a good number.
For the median house, we get that from uh M P A C, it um, it comes out to about eighty six dollars a year. Eighty six dollars a year.
So it's about seven bucks a month. Thank you.
Yeah, Counsel Wookiee?
Thank you, your worship. Um. I think that with inflation being, say, around annualized around six percent, I think two point eight seven is outstanding. And uh you know, I'm I'm. I think that's a wonderful number, and I hope that revenues are higher, but I'd prefer to see it pass the way it is, and then we'll. Hopefully see good things and no snow. Um but I do think, I do think the reality of the economics of the situation is.
In that order, or can I have it in the other order?
You can, whichever way you want, you're the mayor. Um so like, I I think that if you, I think any municipality has a ta- a tax levy increase that's roughly half of what inflation is. Is doing outstanding job, the staff is doing outstanding job, we're doing the easy part, we're just saying yes to it, but that's my thoughts on that one, thank you.
Can I take that as a motion?
Yes.
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
I was going to state that I am willing to support Counselor Peterson, Counselor Kohler, and their um idea to bring forward what Counselor Clark. Has been suggesting and would support that motion.
Well, I love, I I like what the number is, I just haven't seen where yet where we're getting it, if we're not suggesting absolutely. That it's a reserve fund reduction. Counselor Peters?
Well, we send it back to staff. This is what we want. We want staff to find three hundred thousand dollars in this budget and report back to us. As to how we, how they would recommend to us we achieve that goal. Um or if not, we just uh, unless you want to say an arbitrary number, and we say to every department. Across the city, you all need to find X number of percent to achieve us to that three hundred thousand dollars, and that way it's. Done equitably across the board, and every every department um has to take uh, find find something in their budgets.
Um I I I like what you're saying, but I I think these departments work very, very hard to get this number for us to now see. Now go back and found point five. Well, it's maybe fair to some and not to others, and so I'd rather. That this is a council decision. Counselor Clark, I am staring at you, aren't I?
Well, I would I would beg to differ. I think uh management has had a lot of meetings and discussed what was above the line and what was below the line. And I think in fairness to them, uh I would, I would recommend that we we do as Counselor Peter says, rather than just uh saying. You know, here's the number and everybody loses that this amount, uh they've already, they've already made a lot of decisions and. Let them come up with where they think the three hundred thousand should come from.
Further comments? Counselor Kohler?
Yeah, I was I was prepared to identify too, but I I don't have a problem with that, because at the end of the day, with all the reserves that are there, even. Even the infrastructure uh renewal reserve, there's eight hundred, after all the drawdowns, there's still eight hundred and fifty five thousand left in there, or if they piece it up from. From whatever, if there isn't anything else that can go in there, I I I quite honestly think that when they look at it, they they quite possibly with all the discussion that would hear. It's just increase the revenue in different areas by that same amount, and still offset it either way, but.
I just haven't heard exactly how that's happening. I I agree that with Counselor Peter's thoughts, and certainly what Mister Bray has brought forward, that we could probably find some this year. Because we're out of COVID finally, we're doing some rentals on some of our 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 facilities, we come up with increased revenues. Great, love it. Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. But personally, I don't see any harm asking the department heads to take a look at. Uh we we don't need to pass it tonight, uh we could come back next week, they could come back with recommendations. If they came back and said. We we can't get to it, then we respect that, and then we move forward on it, so anyway, give them a chance, I think.
Okay, all right, I was, I was hoping we'd get there tonight, but if we're, we can't, that's great. Counselor Kohler?
Well, I I'd like to challenge ourselves in passing it. We're talking three hundred thousand dollars here, right? And and identifying identifying that could be, like I said, I I was fine with where we were before. I understand the rationale to. Counselor Clark uh bringing that forward, and I see, I also see a benefit to it, but um. I I wouldn't want to see us for the sake of the three hundred thousand dollars. Uh waiting for another meeting to 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 identify it, could we not? do that now? Dan, like the the working, infrastructure working reserve, taking it from from there. It is a uh for general operations, like what would be the big deal identifying it from there? But again, with that caveat that it was going to be replaced with the work that we're gonna do throughout the year to ensure that revenue is is increased or surpluses are and surpluses are found.
Mister Treasurer, could I ask you if you feel comfortable with what was just said?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what I said earlier that taking money out into reserve, you're postponing that tax levy till next year, right? So you're reducing this year's levy. So next year it comes in, it'll be it'll be addition, it'll be on top of the amount next year.
That's if we don't meet those targets that we're that we're looking for, right? So that's something that I think we're, from what I hear, comfortable with knowing that we can find that that additional revenue. So I I I totally uh appreciate that advice because and I don't think we're gonna be in I told you so moment, but if we are next year, then you can you can definitely do that, but I think there's opportunity uh for us to find that and I think will make us work even harder to ensure that uh those those funds, those funds will be there. But for myself, I would like to suggest that the funds come from the infrastructure owner renewal reserve so we can move forward tonight.
Counselor Peters?
Your worship, I'm not opposed to it becoming becoming from a combination of sources. I I still think when we when we had a budget of two hundred thousand for provincial offenses revenue and we slashed and we've just in this budget, if we approve it, we're 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 having a seventy five thousand dollar revenue. I think there's a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars worth of room there. It may not be a hundred and twenty five thousand, so maybe it is a combination of uh uh anticipation that uh you know, we're we may have some new system in place for provincial offenses revenue. But again, this is where I I in in many ways would like to say it, send the direction back to staff. Look, this is what I I'm prepared to vote tonight. I would be, I'm with Counselor Kohler and yourself, your worship of the uh the two point eight seven increase, but I think Counselor Clark has made some good points and it's sort of changed my thinking um this this evening and say to staff, look, you know, I I'll put on the table that, you know, we increased the revenues on provincial offenses by a hundred thousand dollars. Now we gotta find two hundred thousand.
Counselor McCully.
So although I agree with, you know, trying to find ways to lower it, um, I also agree with Counselor Wookiee on, um, you know, this is fairly reasonable tax increase. And if we're going to use reserves, what kind of precedence does that set? And if it's going to, if we don't generate the revenue that we're hoping to generate and next year it's a double whammy, so to speak, you know, what kind of predicament will will we be in there since we've already set a precedent of of utilizing reserve funds?
Well, I I see it from this chair, but I'm waiting for a motion of some sort, I think. I see that we can be where we are and decide that that two eight, two point eight seven is the right number or two point three seven is last year's number and we would like to see if we can hit it again. And if we do want to change that way, we'll need to have something in the motion that suggests how we're changing. Counselor Wookiee?
I would move that we accept two point eight seven and we charge staff with uh research and user fees and and hopefully then we have some uh significant uh monies near the end of the year and we can make this time next year, we can make other choices.
Counselor Peters?
Your worship, when to 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 Dan, when would we be seeing the bylaw for uh the two thousand twenty three tax bill? Like just if we suddenly say if we said two eight seven or two three seven tonight, doesn't, we're probably not gonna have that bylaw in front of us to what Ja- mid-January, late-January?
Uh, no, the the interim comes in uh hopefully in December, but the next years will be around May-June. Just set the tax rates for next year. It's cuz we do an interim billing at the start and then we uh we bill halfway through.
So we've got some time that whether we pass two point three seven or two eight seven tonight, it's still not gonna have an impact on somebody's taxes until June of next year.
Yeah, we actually around May, May-June, we enter the uh the levy in there that sets the rates.
Counselor Kohler?
I I agree with Counselor Peters and I think the key thing here now, like I was fully prepared to have this done tonight, but what what is the rush? But the key thing is that the capital is done, so staff can go out and start utilizing that and getting that going. So a- again, for the operating, as long as it's clear that the capital budget is approved, nothing's happening there and that we can go forward with and making sure and those jobs are tendered and moving that forward. I I'm I'm fine with uh waiting because there is no real rush to proceed with the operating as long as the capitals pass and and with that direction and they can come back with uh what we're looking at.
Uh, my question of the treasurer is are you suggesting we don't set a tax rate till May? That doesn't, that has not been what we've done.
No, I'm not suggesting that. Because we need to, by then the half the year will be over and we need, people need budgets to run their departments.
Right.
So we we don't want to do that. There could be fine adjustments in there, but not nothing substantial by then.
Okay. Mister Clark?
Uh, city manager, would you rather us find the three hundred right now or would you like to take some time with your staff? And uh, maybe it's a combination of things as has been suggested.
Well, thank you. Thought I would get out of this without having to answer that question. Um, I I think it's probably fair to say that the budget that's in front of you is a budget that we've worked together to come to um as best as we can identifying the cost and the increases. Um, if council's direction is for us to find three hundred thousand dollars, we'll go back and find that. I'm um like the combination of uh revenue uh versus uh reductions, I am hesitant to indicate that there will be more revenue and we say we haven't, we haven't been seeing that revenue in the last little while. And so I would be very hesitant to uh suggest that that revenue might be uh either achieved or exceeded. So we'll probably be looking at cuts, to be frank.
I can't move a motion from here. I'm looking for one of you to suggest what our step is. You moved a motion. I needed a second or from what Counselor Wookiee has suggested that we move with two point eight seven. Counselor McCully?
Counselor Wookiee, could you please repeat the motion?
Thank you. I move move that we accept the two point seven, two point eight seven percent increase for the operating budget, for the total budget, I should say.
As presented, okay? Is there a second or? Not seeing one. Okay, Counselor McCully? You second? Okay, so have a second or now discussion on that on that motion. We, I think we've talked it through pretty well, right? But if there's more discussion, I'd rather have it now than seeing none. All those in favor? All right, so that's defeated. All right.
Worship, I would move uh two point three seven percent increase.
Counselor Clark, you're you're seconding that? Okay. Discussion on that number. Counselor Kohler?
I think I'm just, are we gonna give the direction as to where it's gonna go or are we gonna get?
I was hoping
I I think I think again, and I I appreciate Counselor McCully's uh words on on reserves, but reserves are there for a purpose also.
Right.
And they're to be not just there forever. So it's there to use at the discretion, whatever, but I firmly believe, give and I respect the the city managers um comments there as well and 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 uh appreciate that, but I I think not just through the revenues. I don't want to see any cuts cuz I don't want to see the reduce for service. And I think maybe I misspoke before. I think there's opportunity already for surplus that's in here. So it's not just all, it's not just increased revenue. I think that there's opportunity from what I see in here with surplus that would go back to replenish those reserves. And I think keeping a responsible budget like that would also help um send a message out there to industry and other people that are looking to uh invest in communities that St. Thomas is serious about uh wanting their business and uh will help increase revenue from that way. But I I I think that there's room for us to to make up that three hundred thousand dollars.
Further discussion? Counselor Gibson?
I have to agree with what Jeff and uh Steve, Counselor, sorry, Counselor Kohler and Peters is saying. Going to the reserve isn't really a bad thing at all. Um, we all do it in our own home financials. We always dip in, but we always make sure within a time period we get the dollar amount in. And if we have extra gains, it wouldn't hurt to also to indicate for the next following budget, we put more in. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion on that motion, all those in favor? Well, that's carried. We passed the budget capital and operating in the same night. Again, thank you very much. I have nothing else on this agenda, so I think what we will do is uh recess and return to a closed session. So we'll be in closed session when we return. Uh, five minute break.
Uh, your worship, if we can just have a motion to adjourn this.
Oh, sorry.
Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Yes?
Uh, just one further one. Uh, when when we were talking about further opportunities for revenue, I just wonder if we could ask for a report in in um on uh green energy and taking a look at ways that uh we could maybe use some of our buildings for either solar or I'm thinking of the the sewage plant using methane to recover and and creating revenue from that. So could I ask for one more report from staff that uh would maybe examine some of those revenue streams for the future?
Yeah, and it's in our our strategic plan to do so too. Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments about the budget process. I want to appreciate the work that has been done and the effort that's been done by the staff. I appreciate all of the work that's been done over several months. But I also want to applaud the senior management staff for the outside boards who reported that this year was a little more pleasant. It was very respectful and very encouraging when they were included around the table and I wanted to acknowledge that to the staff and to the city departments. Thank you.
All in favor of adjournment? We are adjourned, five minutes to close.